To call this meeting to order, welcome everyone here this evening. Medium-sized agenda, so I anticipate it's been too, too long. But good to see you turn out. So do we have a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Counselor Croft, seconded. Thank you, Counselor. All those in favor?
Sorry.
Oh, well, I'm going to... I was going to head into the public hearing after we get things underway. I guess we can do that. Yeah, it's a beforehand thing today, okay. Okay, so I don't get ahead of myself here. Thank you for following my attention to that. Chairman's statement, we had that kicking around here somewhere. Someone just gave it to me. Okay, so I guess this public hearing is underway. Now, there is a mandated statement that I have to read. And the purpose of the public hearing today is to hear input on zoning amendment bylaw number 1367, 2015. And the purpose of the zoning amendment bylaw is to amend the District of Hope zoning bylaw number 1324, 2012. So the zoning amendment bylaw, and I guess technically I have to read it as it is in the head sheet, correct?
The Bible?
Yes. Yeah, so complete with all the fancy numbers and letters and all the difference, okay. To read zoning property legally described as lot B, Plan 31084, except Plan 39120, PID 001-775-782, address 19700, Claussen Road, from rural RU1 to light service industrial I2. We have two public submissions that were received, and a letter received from Mr. Robert Smith and Linda Kellum, and there was a letter received from Ministry of Transportation and Infrastructure dated January 4th stating, "Traffic impact assessment has been requested and is currently in progress. Once the traffic impact assessment, TIA, has been completed and approved, Ministry of Transportation and Infrastructure will proceed with the zoning referral." Okay. Now, our Director of Community Development, do you have... I guess you want to lay the groundwork here on this?
I do just interject for a moment. We did receive two other letters of support.
Two extra?
And they were on council's desk, one from Advantage Hope and one from Stephen Marshall.
Okay, I guess I could read those into the record as well. So there's one from Advantage Hope here. It's addressed to Mr. Bill Miller, proponent for the 168 truck stop. Letter of support for rezoning states, "Dear Bill, thank you for sharing your plans with me for development of a truck stop on the south side of the Trans-Canada Highway just on exit 168. Sounds like this development would be beneficial to the community and in line with the vision of development in the area in which it is proposed. By its nature, Advantage Hope is supportive of new development initiatives coming to Hope that align to the current economic development plan. Based on our conversations, your project would bring employment and commerce to town. On top of that, your plans to be a committed contributing member of local community will be a further benefit to the area. Wish you much success with your development project and look forward to welcoming you to the business community here in Hope. If Advantage Hope can give any assistance as you progress with your plans, do not hesitate to be in touch." And that's signed, Tammy Shields, Executive Director. And then we have the other letter which was Dullingham referenced, it's addressed to Mayor and Council, District of Hope, dated January 19th, stating, "I am encouraging you to pass the proposed amendment regarding the property at 19700 Claussen Road. I believe that this project by KYA Holdings meets the needs of our community. The official community plan says in part, 'Support major economic development,' and also says, 'New development contributes to making Hope a more complete community.' This development will help increase the commercial tax base, possibly helping take the tax load off the homeowners of our town. This project, once it is built up and running, will provide many, many, much more needed jobs to the systems of Hope." This is, "Thank you." Signed, Steve Marshall, local business manager." So... Yeah, I got to read that word for word. So we have a mandated statement, which is long-winded for those of you that have been to public hearings before. You will... This'll be a bit of a rerun for you, but that's the way it has to be in this. If I lose my voice, I may have to get this Dullingham to fill in for me because I have this funky throat issue here the last few days, so... Yeah. I'm sure it's not contagious, honestly.
That's over.
I think it's just a cool of some description, so we should all be safe here. Okay, Chairperson's statement is as follows, District of Hope Public Hearing. This public hearing is being convened pursuant to the community charter and the Local Government Act. In accordance with the charter, the time and place of the public hearing was advertised in two editions of the Hope Standard newspaper. In accordance with the District of Hope Application Procedures and Public Hearing Information, meaning procedural bylaw, Amendment bylaw number 28/93 and the Local Government Act, the required specifications have been complied with. This public hearing is being convened in order to hear public input on the aforementioned zoning amendment bylaw number 1367, 2015. At this public hearing, any persons who believe that their interest in property is affected by the proposed agenda items may speak or present written submissions to council on this matter. As chairperson, I will read any written briefs from persons unable to attend this hearing so that they may become part of the record. Those who wish to speak should, when invited to speak, clearly state their name and address for the record. It is important that all who speak at this meeting restrict their remarks to the matters contained in the bylaws. No one will be or should feel discouraged or prevented from making his or her views known. Members of council may ask questions of those making presentations. The main function of council at the public hearing is, however, to listen to the comments of the public, not to debate the merits of the bylaw. Members of council may debate any issues on the bylaw at the time of third and final reading. Order of proceedings will be as follows. Director of Community Development, Mr. Jazz Gill, will briefly describe the matters under consideration and provide a brief explanation of the proposed bylaw. Two, the applicant or agent for the applicant will be invited to make a brief presentation. Three, all written submissions will form part of the record of the hearing. Four, oral submissions from the public will be heard, and any further written submissions, if any, will be received. And then, of course, we conclude it by having the hearing closed. No further submissions, either verbal or written, regarding the proposed bylaws can be made to council following this hearing, and I think that's an important part for us to mention everyone in attendance and anyone viewing at home through the ratepayers televised coverage here. That's something, if you approach us after the fact with new information, we're not trying to be standoffish by not getting involved in a long conversation. It's just a mandated part of the zoning process, we just can't do that. So after this public hearing has concluded, the council may, without further notice, give whatever effect it believes proper to the representations made at this hearing and the bylaw being considered. As was previously mentioned, it is zoning amendment bylaw number 1367, 2015. So, Mr. Gill, you've been patient with waiting.
Your worship through you. The proposal is to construct a truck stop, gas station, including restaurants. And being preliminary, the idea is to have a sit-down restaurant and restaurant catering to a fast food chain, so two restaurants, technically speaking. Further, there will be a commercial truck parking area as a part of this truck stop. Right now, the property zone rule, RU1, in order to facilitate truck stop use, it would have to go into an I2 zone or a C2 zone. In this case, the applicant decided to go the I2 zone because it does not require an OCP amendment, which in other terms means it's supported by the OCP. Furthermore, they have provided a preliminary design of the facility. The proponent is here in the gallery. If there's any proponent's concept, questions, please relate to the proponent. They also have their traffic engineer here. If there's any traffic-related questions, he will be able to address those.
Okay. Gentlemen.
Mayor.
You're welcome to say a few words if you'd like.
If you don't mind.
All the merits of the project, why this is exciting for Hope, why we should do this.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Amen. Okay, just connect.
Yeah. And if we could do a quick intro here?
Oh, sorry. My name is Bill Miller. My partner, Dan, we're the owners of the property. We're also the applicants under our company, meaning to rezone the property so that we can achieve our goal.
Mr. Miller, I could ask you to stand on this side of the diagram and speak to council and the public.
Sorry.
We're okay here.
Sorry, sir.
There you are.
Okay. All right, so our idea of the property, when we bought the property, we hired third-party firms to give us an idea of what to do with the property. It was previously a gravel pit or something like that. And so we filled in that hole, cleaned it all up and everything, spent all the money to level it and bring it up to grade for further construction. So our idea is to build a gas station, retail gas, commercial fuel, truck stop. In here, right now, it's a convenience store, a gas station store, Tim Hortons, Ricky's Restaurant, and a Fat Burger Express, not a sit-down fat burger restaurant. They call it a fat burger hybrid, so... All of those things we're in discussions with right now, but nothing is firm until, you know, the zoning and everything's done, then we can put something solid with everybody. But everybody's waiting there for us to do a deal with them. So we believe that it's going to bring a lot of people to Hope. We're developing this as a destination stop, so anybody coming from the lower mainland, Vancouver Island, anywhere, this is where we want to set up, like a meeting point. So if they're meeting people and they're going into the interior or outdoor or anything, we want to bring them into this location and create what we call a destination stop so they can eat before they go further, and then bringing them to Hope. We're hoping that those people will go into Hope to utilize other businesses in the community. We're both, Dan and I, are both local guys. We live in Chilliwack, so the phrase of value is local. So we are very, very involved with community. We will be very, very involved with the Hope community. We will be... I've coached hockey for 20 years up in Chilliwack. We'll be involved with the community in that respect by helping sports, you know, getting involved in other areas where we can. And that's about the gist of it. So, like I say, we're... Our focus is, obviously, it's a business, and our objective is to make money, but in doing it, we want to bring people to Hope, and we believe that we can create that stop, that destination stop that will bring the people here. Question? End of it.
More questions from council?
Yeah, I got a question. Is there sewer and water on that side of the road?
No.
So how are you going to deal with that?
We're yet to have the engineers discuss that with us. I haven't talked about it in sewer. I think water's going to have to be well.
There's sewer across the highway at the old house, so it wouldn't be much connecting under highway, yeah.
That's not my concern, what you'll do with that.
Well, I think that a few discussions will have to be taken on the engineers. Now, you're a developer, so my expertise isn't that.
Would that... My name's Ken Hall. I'm just curious, would that sewer be able to be tied into by the rest of the people on that side of the street as well?
For sure.
Yeah. That'd be a good thing.
Yeah. Definitely, if we bring that in, I think it'll service that whole area.
Okay. Additional comments from the public?
Well, fire.
Good, bad, or indifferent, all of them?
Pardon, sir.
We want fire and sewer.
Again, I think that will be the engineers when they get involved.
Fire suppression, fire hydrants?
Yeah.
If part of the station will be fire suppression, it'll have to be on-site. I talked with the well community, and it'll draw a second well just for fire suppression. And they'll have two pumps down it, so if one were to fail, there's a second one, and we'll go back and forth, but there's, you know, a pumping requirement. So there's a dedicated, you know, supply of water directly for fire safety.
For the town and the downtown?
Not the town. This is a well we draw on our own property, right? So it's the... It'd be fire protection for that property.
Yes?
How many employees are you thinking when it's running?
Well, for example, previous Huskies that are just a Husky station, that's all they've got, with the restaurant attached, have in excess of 100 employees. So with a truck stop, retail, commercial, you know, the idea of a Tim Hortons, a Ricky's, a Fat Burger, there's over 100.
Is it 24 hours?
Yeah.
24 hours, yeah.
Your start, your completion date, when do you hope to have this facility?
We're hoping to get started in March, and it's about a one-year timeframe.
Will the property be leveled any before the building is going to be constructed, like brought up?
It'll have to be brought up, yeah. There's a... At the crossroads of Claussen Road and the off-ramp, there's a sort of a center of that intersection. It's sort of like a, it's called a ground zero or something, and from that point, we have an elevation requirement off of that intersection, so there'll be some...
You're pretty close.
Yeah, it's pretty close that way. We had someone from the city come up once already to verify that we were at a proper elevation before we could get the financing.
Your worship, for clarification of this conversation, we're talking about the flight construction level for Area C at this overall point.
I do have another question. So transport trucks, how many do you perceive coming in? I know that we need a transportation study still underway for Ministry of Transport, so...
Yeah, we've done two traffic studies through, it can't be called creative traffic solutions, and Gary here is representative for them, so...
This is traffic engineer that we hired to do the traffic study.
Let him respond to traffic, yeah.
He's really, really tall.
Yeah.
I didn't even jump out.
Counselor Diblet through the chair. We've done it, completed our traffic study. It's currently in draft form with the Ministry of Transportation, so there's been a little bit of back and forth, they're seeking clarification. The... What we did in order to figure out how much traffic would be generated is we actually surveyed the flying jet on the other side, as per the recommendation and approval from the Ministry of Transportation. What we are anticipating is that for a typical peak hour, so not a crazy long weekend, which everybody I'm sure is quite well aware of how that happens there, but typical weekday, Friday afternoon, we're looking in the order of about 243 vehicles being generated by the site, and that's partially trucks and, but mostly, passenger cars. Because the trucks will be, obviously, be parked in the back and coming through, based on our survey, we found that, yes, there are a fairly significant number of trucks compared to the general traffic stream, but particularly on a Friday afternoon, the preponderance of traffic is passenger cars. Does that answer your question?
It does, and I guess my question is that little, that's a pretty tight little loop for transport trucks. Once they come off the highway, they'll move right into your property, but to get back on the highway again, coming from, you know, right next to J-Mage Industries, that's a tight little corner there, so...
That all gets proven out through, as part of the design process, so not to bore council and the public with all the technical details, but there's software available that allows us to track, and that has to be proven as well to the ministry. Because that ramp is under, with all due respect to council, is not under your jurisdiction, it's under the ministry's jurisdiction, so we have to prove it out to the ministry's satisfaction that things will operate in a safe and effective manner.
Okay. Sir, what was the vehicle count there again? I have 200 and...
We're estimating during the peak hour, 243 vehicles, and roughly 50, yeah, roughly 50/50 in-out. Okay. The intention is, of course, is to intercept the traffic that, to be coming off of the highway at the exit. They would be inbound only at Claussen, so if we look at the drawing, at the bottom side of the drawing, that would be where it's labeled Claussen, that would be inbound only, and all the outbound traffic would be at the east side of the property. So it's a one-way flow through the property.
Okay. And a quick question through to Mr. Gill. Now, the entrance requirements and the existing road right of way on Claussen Road to access the Toy property, is that all tucked away? Is that all taken care of? I know there's a parcel of property directly west of, I think it's 10 acres, owned by the Toy family.
Any sort of design works, because we haven't received any civil drawings, would be to the satisfaction of public works, and therefore, there would be development sort of standards that would have to be met for that work.
Yeah, I know a number of members in the public have talked to me about that, and I said, "I'm sure it's all probably taken care of."
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Sir?
Just a question, just about stormwater management. Just thinking about the surface area of the paved area where the trucks and the vehicles are gathering. Is there some kind of a plan to mitigate the effects of non-point source pollution, you know, the cumulative effect of dripping oil pans and maybe the odd leaky radiator and stuff, dealing with that kind of water, and just intervening before it reaches the river for any wetlands nearby?
Currently, right now, the drain will be going to the back of the property, but I think, again, at the time, the engineers would be dealing with those contains. Because right now, they're saying to take all the drain of the property to the back, to the bottom of the hillside, and that's where it would drain away.
We're going to make a retention pit at the back so that rocks coming off the hill now won't be falling in that hole and be contained there. And then the water would go there. And right now, like, there's waterfalls that come down when it rains on the side of the mountain, and that water just disappears, like it's like a raging waterfall, there's nothing in the bottom, it's gone right here. So we were, we're going to have a one-meter slope from the front of the property to the back, so that, you know, like, everything should drain towards the mountain.
Surface water.
And then, I'm sure that throughout the process, there'll be, to address your concern, there will definitely be some sort of, you know, containment issue for any, you know, any contaminants, so...
From what I've read, yeah, eventually, if it's allowed to just percolate, it's going to get cleansed by the soil particles and air spaces in between, so if it's got an opportunity to just recharge the aquifer below, should be all right.
It's a natural filter system.
Because as long as it's not shooting straight into a creek or...
No, I don't think there's any surface water anywhere directly near the property, and it's all going to be directed to the back into that retention pit now.
Spoken like a true founding father of the Hope Mountain Center.
You bet. Part of our grade five curriculum.
Yeah, I'd like it. Additional comments from the gallery?
Just that I think the traffic flows a lot better on our side than it does on the other side as well, because the on-off is just typically, there's an exit right off, back onto the freeway, it doesn't have to meander, you know, down through the community and whatnot, and it's pretty well-suited there for traffic. Even though I'm sure they're going to, I'm not, you know, I'm not doing a study, but just from general notice of the way the traffic flows there, it probably would work better on this side, that side of the freeway than it does currently on the other side.
Yeah, I think you're right, yeah. Yeah. Normal noise inconvenience to residents for those just...
Well, there are no real residents out there. Well, it's, we wanted to do that about loop out there, right?
Yeah. Okay, I think we're well beyond the three calls for oral submissions, but we'll try one more just for negative. Okay, I think we're good. Thank you all. I think you missed one of the papers. These are not very well. Okay. Okay, I guess we'll adjourn the hearing and move into the regular council meeting. Call this to order. I got a little add-on. Counselor Croft and Erickson on the approval of the agenda. Is that still available, folks? Anyone in favor of that? Okay, thank you. Adoption of the minutes of the regular meeting of council on January 11th. Thank you. Counselor Diblet, thank you. All those in favor? Counselors in favor? Thank you. Very fortunate to have with us, no stranger to council, Mr. Kelly Pierce, who is program director for the Hope Mountain Center, and he is here to give us an update on activities that took place in 2015, and also, I guess, a look forward for 2016.
All right, Pierce, well, I guess maybe I'll stand up next to the screen. Could sharpen the focus a little bit. That's it, I can't work with these people.
Sorry.
No, that's cool. This is fine. So we get an impressionistic idea of what we did. So, yeah, this is my annual report to mayor and council and the community of Hope, just to update you on what we got up to in 2015 and give you a bit of an idea of some of the things we planned to do in 2016. Thank you very much for your time. How much time do I have, by the way?
Five minutes.
Four more minutes. You're the only delegation, so we can cut a little slack here. Okay, I'll kind of be overly indulged. I actually come back from a number of slides this year. So, yeah, next slide, please. Just a reminder who we are, we're a nonprofit society based in the HPC. That's our staff and our board members, and we actually celebrated our 10th anniversary this year, so somebody might have seen us out in Memorial Park, blowing lights all over the place and having some various activity stations set up, so it's kind of neat to be marking that first decade. And some of us have been on the board for that long, it's hard to imagine, but we have. And we're all about getting people outside and education while we're out there, so that's our core mandate, getting people outside. Next slide, please. And I wanted to remind everybody, too, one of the reasons we exist is because we have a core funder called the Skagit Environmental Endowment Commission. And it's good to remind ourselves every now and then how Hope represents the northern gateway to the Skagit. You can actually see the Canada-US border running through the northern end of the watershed there, and the entire watershed boundary is defined, and you can see it runs through Canada and the United States, majority of it being in the US. But you can see the headwaters are up in Manning and Skagit provincial parks. There's Hope up there on the Fraser, and the Skagit Environmental Endowment Commission basically manages everything that happens from Ross Dam north up to the northern end of the watershed, and they give a certain amount of money out to different nonprofits for education and other projects, scientific research, education, recreation, that sort of thing. So without these guys, we would not exist, so I just thought I'd put that little plug out there. We have lots of other funders helping us out now, too, of course, but really, they're one of our key core funders, which help us really get started. Next slide, please. And that's the overview of the programs that we did this year. Bigger audience than ever before, 351 programs reaching over 16,000 people, and I'll go into some of the specifics of what we did. Next slide. This is one of the things that you see a lot around town, the marketed trips that we promote, typically 20-odd trips, we reached almost 700 people, and we run these trips through all seasons, reaching all ages, diverse pricing. Some of our programs are free, we're running a series of winter trips for families right now, February, March, that are mostly going to be free, and some of them have very low cost. Others have more significant costs, depending on the direct cost of the trip, buses and peels and so on, but a real range of topics, and they're all happening within about 40 minutes of Hope, and lots of stuff happening right in town. Next slide, please. Instead of showing you a photo of every single trip that we ran this year, I thought I'd just show you one magnificent photo of one of those trips. This is BC River Day, leaving from the beautiful shores of Fort Hope on Sunday, September this year, 2015, and we went downriver to the Agassi Bridge. But in view there, you can see 40 boats, actually, it's 39, but rounding up, it's about 40 boats on the Fraser River. We've just pulled up from shore along World Street there, and somebody ran up onto the bridge. Sandy McGuire actually got up there and took up this great picture of all of us floating down together. So we were traveling with river scientists and educators, and we were teaching people about the ecology of the Fraser, and the salmon runs on the river, and the importance of the gravel bars there, and how the watershed worked. So really fun trip, we're out there dipmanning for salmon, juvenile salmon, and looking at fish along the route. And I just wanted to leave you with that one image, and then think about, you know, 20 trips like this through the year. We do birding programs, geology trips, but, you know, they really put Hope in focus, and they really present Hope in an exciting, dynamic way, and people come away, I tell you, the comments we get back on our programs, they love what a beautiful town this is and how gorgeously situated it is, because we really are using the land... Because we really are using the land base right in town as a missing sample on many other trips that we ran in and around town through the year. But also, you know, typically, no more than a half an hour, a 40-minute drive from town. So what we're, in effect, doing is we're promoting the heck out of Hope. And that's not our core mandate, but it's a very happy result of what we do. And it's driven a lot of enthusiasm for this town in the region. If you show the next slide there. That's just a reminder of where they're coming from. The vast majority from the Fraser Valley, of course, and particularly the eastern Fraser Valley, everything from Abbotsford East. But also, a big chunk from Metro Vancouver, about a quarter of our audience from there. Significant number from Okanagan. They're crossing over from places like Kamloops and Merritt and Antikton, Princeton, to attend our programs and then various other slices of the pot. But really, Glorima, I'm for sure, is our core audience. Next slide, please. We also run a series of special events. So one of our big ones is the Vancouver International Mountain Film Festival. And last year, we sold out the theater again for, I think, the third consecutive year that we've had a sell-out. I'm sure we're expecting to do that again this year. Wonderful variety of films from around the world shown at the Hope Cinema with its brand-new digital projector and digital sound. Really exciting evening. Next slide, please. We do a whole bunch of school programs. This year, we ran 40 programs that created over 1,200 student contacts. Everything starting with little kindergarten kids. It's Strong Start age, it's pre-kindergarten, actually. And grade three, four, five. And of course, a key sponsor there is the Nestle Waters Canada. They're a really tremendous corporate sponsor that's been supporting these school programs for several years now. Next slide, please. We also help out the school district in running a grade six camping trip. And this is a really fun trip for kids. You can see all the tents parked over there near Ross Lake at the Ross Lake Group campsite. Great trip for these kids. A lot of them, their first time out in nature, especially on an overnight or away from their parents. But a really fun trip, teaching lots of ecology to the kids while they're out there on hikes and smores at night and historic play in costume that we do for them in the evenings. It's a really, really fun adventure for those kids. Next slide. We're doing a new school program this year. We're gonna do Beaver Tales for grade two. Has anybody noticed that massive beaver lodge that's been built at the mouth of Suckers Creek right where it comes to Coca-Halle? No building permits were filled out before construction took place.
Al's been out.
Homeowner was gone.
You should be concerned, because it's a significant structure. That man, Mark Lentworth, is six feet tall. And he's as tall as that house is and its number of meters in diameter. Fortunately for the beavers, though, they built it right beside the Coca-Halle. And you know what's gonna happen when the Coca-Halle comes up this spring. And that's why you should always submit a permit before you build. The Coca-Halle's gonna come in and just wipe that thing up. But we're planning in the month of March to get as many grade twos down there as we can, including kids from Agassie and Harrison. They're gonna come by bus and we're gonna show them this lodge. Because, you know, it's a really neat example, the opportunity to be able to get really close to the lodge and touch it and see how it was built. And there's visible entrances and exits coming out of each side of it. So I do get down there and have a look at it before the river comes up. It's quite something. And of course, they chopped down dozens of trees all around the area, too, so we can show the kids their amazing cutting teeth of beavers and how they chew wood and...
How long did Jake and Beaver make it up?
That's a good question. They started building that thing in early December. So in about two months, they'd have built it.
Busy Beaver.
And when you look at the sheer volume and the deter, all you can think of big rodent can do that is pretty amazing.
No need for subtrades.
No, exactly. It's all kept within the family. And they do live in family colonies, up to a dozen animals, depending on the amount of available food. They have up to six young every spring and the colony can just go and grow. And so it is very much a communal kind of effort. They're all in there. And I can only imagine how musty it must get on a winter's day. But we plan to add more grade units in the years ahead. We want to have kindergarten grade one. This year, we're launching grade two, but we're basically kind of reverse engineering. We just got some more funding from the district. And you can see all the various partners that team up with us on these school programs. The school district, of course, but also FDRD parks, because we're up and on their land base and we're teaching those kids various wetlands and things. So a great team effort and a really wonderful community program. You know, there's not probably many towns in BC that can offer their kids ecological education in the outdoors at every grade level from Strong Start right up to grade six. It's an amazing thing. And then, of course, Jason Fisher, an high school teacher, takes the kids up on snowshoe trips and hikes and more physically ambitious stuff when they get into grade seven, eight, nine, 10, and so on. So there's this upward path, they tell you. We're gonna be raising a generation of kids that are really ecologically literate and understand how their world works and hopefully love being outside in it. So that's what the school program really is all about and it's core. Next slide, please. And also, we've been continuing to support programs up at Manning Park. Again, with money from the Skagit Environmental Endowment Commission. And because of that perfect summer we had with continuous hot sunny days, there was some smoke in the air, but, you know, it was a pretty flawless summer, other than the smoke. So they were able to do a record number of programs and reached over 11,000 people with seven-day-a-week programming in Manning Park. And that's great. It's really revitalized the park. It keeps families in the park longer. It educates them about the park. And provincial parks are incredibly important to our economy. And I think, as we all saw, that terrifying vision of the Manning Park Resort going temporarily out of business a couple years ago. It's like, I think it sobered everybody up in Hope. It's like, holy crap, a world without Manning Park Resort. We all knew in our gut, I think, that there was gonna be economic ramifications if that park didn't continue to flourish. But I'm very happy to say the MPR is under very good management again. And the visitation at the park is absolutely fantastic, both summer and winter. So they're doing well and we'll continue to support them. Next slide. There's a bunch of conservation things that we do in the area. We do water testing in the Skagit. We've got a grizzly hotline. That's one of the images that was sent to us by a person who saw that grizzly at East Gate, just outside Manning Park's eastern boundary. And we've just received another $10,000 from the Ministry of Environment to continue with that monitoring program. Because basically, we're turning the people of British Columbia into the eyes and the ears of the Cascades. Every time they see or cite a grizzly and preferably record it, they send those sightings into us and we note their geographic location, share all that information with scientists and ministry officials. So it's a good value. You're all familiar with the Black Bear Committee. Lydia Coote and her team put in about 1,000 hours a year of volunteer time educating residents of Hope, picking fruit from trees. And they helped to really reduce bear encounters in our town. And once again, in 2015, we didn't have a single bear relocation. Lots of bear relocation, but no... And there were no shootings necessary. Unfortunate about the cougar recently, that was sad to see, but apparently a necessity given the danger the animal represented. But nice to see, you know, the number of bears that we're losing drastically reduced. And I think the Bear Committee is really helping to do that. Friends of Skagit, if you'll shoot to the next slide. They're a great bunch. Lydia's involved with that, too. They put in lots of hours just trying to protect the Skagit. We've been noticing an increasing amount of burl dumping and just bad behavior on the weekends with campers. And a small number of campers, but my gosh, they may be small in number, but large in impact. And so we're trying to just improve behavior. And we've been installing backcountry cameras to try and catch the bad guys. And we got funding from the Vancouver Foundation to do that last year. And we'll continue to do that in 2016. Next slide. Lastly, I wanted to just sum up some of our trail projects. It was a huge year for trails in 2015. 883 volunteer hours in various local trail projects. Next slide. I think the biggest achievement was Hudson's Bay Company Trail. We completed the trail from Hope to Tulamine. That's now 74-kilometer wilderness trail. We'll be at the Vancouver International, or Vancouver International, Vancouver Outdoor Show at the Trading Convention Center to promote this trail. We're really moving into a marketing mode now. We're gonna publish a special brochure on the HBC. We're reaching out to various community groups and presenting lots of stuff in the region and through our website and other means, just promoting the heck out of this trail. We're starting to get a lot of comments about it and inquiries. Want to turn it into one of those bucket list trails that everybody wants to hike. There we are at the Brigade Days Parade with a guy in HBC Historic Guard at the front. Next slide. Just wanted to show you a few images of the trail this summer. We had a hard-working team, Mark Weber and Kevin Smith, who, sorry, Craig Smith, worked really hard for two months on the trail, led by Kelly Cook. Here they are hauling cedar boards on their backs to build a campsite. Next slide. The camp was Camp Coalville. They built these elevated tent pads. And all of our campsites have key amenities like tent pads, fire rings, bear-proof food caches, toilets, and that sort of stuff. So we now have 10 really nice overnight sites on this 74-kilometer route. So there's always a campsite coming up within 10 kilometers punctuating the trail. So lots of chances to rest and rest your horses on the way across the mountains. Next slide. That's one of our bear-proof food caches made out of solid steel by a company in Abbotsford. And they're very heavy to carry. Sometimes we had to bring them on ATVs. Sometimes it's by helicopter. But they're really difficult to move, as we found out. But in one case, it was carried by a series of guys, about eight of us hauling it in, supported by two-by-fours. It was a nightmare. They got in there. And here it is being bolted down to a nice sturdy wooden base. But keeps your food dry and keeps your food safe from bears and keeps the bear safe, too, in that area, too. Next slide. And that's another one of our camps, Olive Bean Camp. This is out east of the Tulamine Plateau, near the town of Tulamine, actually. And next slide. And lastly, when you get to the Tulamine River, we just built this kiosk back in December. Justin Brown, a local carpenter, and Darwin Burd was out there at Fraser River Raft Expeditions. And they assembled this thing in sub-zero temperatures and left rigid and cold as they crawled back to their vehicles after installing it. But we're gonna have a grand opening celebration at this location on the Maylong weekend, on Saturday, just outside of Tulamine. So this is the eastern trail, head of the trail. And I want you guys to note, too, that on Saturday of the, I'm looking at the mirror now, Saturday of the Maylong weekend, we really want to have a big celebration on the Hope end of the trail. So on that one Maylong weekend, we're gonna have a Tulamine celebration, a Hope celebration, to just draw attention to the trail and get people there. We'll have historians there. We'll have people in frontier garb. We'll have horse folks on horseback and all kinds of spectacles for you to see. Lots of neat displays and things, too. We'll have new interpretive signs at the kiosks in time for the grand opening in May. Next slide. Also wanted to mention the Hope Bike Park. 380 volunteer hours put in by our volunteer team in that bike park. And that became a real point of pride, I think, for the whole town this year and for these volunteers who were so passionate. Next slide. They're preparing after, previous slide, they're breaking up the ice storm debris in preparation for the arrival of Jay Hoots and his team. And there's Jay Hoots and some of the volunteers teamed up. So it was just amazing. Day in, day out, there were volunteers coming into this park in that crazy, crazy lead-up to the grand opening in June. There was so much work to be done and they managed to do it all. Next slide. This is one of my happiest memories from 2015, was just being there at the grand opening of that bike park. And I want to thank mayor and council again for the political bravery that you guys showed and giving us that extra funding that really helped to push it across the finish line. And that was just a great day. Everybody was just buzzed by it. I was almost in tears when I just saw those hills being climbed by kids, you know, and all those pump tracks just full of kids on bikes. We're gonna continue to market and promote that in the year ahead and give it a good focus. Next slide. This is some of the other things we do to raise the profile of Hope. One is the Vancouver Outdoor Show that I was mentioning at the Trading Convention Center. Literally, thousands of people come through here. Advantage Hope teamed up with us and provided lots of bling handout. You can see those bags of Hope right on there. By the end of the convention, imagine the entire convention space full of bags with Hope BC written all over them, the new Hope logo on them. They looked really great. And they were handing out water bottles and pens and other cool stuff. And of course, we're handing out Trails of Hope brochures. You can see piles of Day Trippers there, too, promoting Hope. And local businesses, Fraser River Raft, Yale District Historical Society, Hellgate Air Tram. There's a wonderful consortium of nonprofits and companies teaming up with Advantage Hope to really strengthen that Hope brand and get it out there to our core marketed audience, which is all those cities to the west of us. And this trade show is just a sold-out show. It is so full of people. And they're all the kind of people that we want to bring to our town and promote our town. It's a great window into the world for Hope. And we're gonna be there again. This reign with an even larger contingent of people. Manning Park Resort is coming on board. And also, Takwayum Historic Village in the Boston Borough area is coming on, too. So we're just gonna continue to grow until it becomes this massive irresistible force coming from the canyon that will dominate Glorima. Next slide. This is something else we did in partnership with Advantage Hope this year. We produced a big four-by-eight interpretive sign presented by Hope Sign Crafters. Did an excellent job, holding it well out there in spite of the rain. And it really helped to promote the Trails of Hope. So it's big. It's got a really nice, easy-to-read map, lots of pretty pictures. And they found that visitor center that it really drove interest in the Trails of Hope brochure. People came, saw the sign, said, "Hey, do you guys have a map that has like all that sign stuff on it?" Boom, here we go, directions on finding all those trailheads. We're gonna be expanding that Trails of Hope map. Next slide, please. How we're gonna expand it in 2016. That was last year's publication, which, of course, promoted the Hope Bike Park on the front cover. It's a really powerful hello from Hope. You know, it's got great directions, lots of trails and campsites, beautiful photos. We printed 10,000 copies and by midsummer, they were running out. So Advantage Hope did sort of an emergency printing of another 5,000. And those are just about to run out. So it's a very popular item. And we want to expand it in terms of size and content, because there's a lot of trails that we're not covering right now in that map that should be on that listing. And the new map sheet will be a little bit bigger, a little easier to read, too. So I think it will be of due benefit to the town in the reprint that we do this year. Next slide. Lastly, I wanted to thank our volunteers. 3,600 hours donated in 2015 worth $54,000 to our organization and really to this town. You think what they're doing in helping us run our events and build trails and all the amazing things they do for this community. So I wanted to thank them. It's one of the great strengths of Hope, is this amazing body of people who are so passionate about this place and come out every time we call them out, in any kind of weather, to do really crazy stuff with strangers in the outdoors. They keep doing it. And some of them come from as far as Northland, too. They're really good core Hope people, but certainly lots of people from Chilliwack and Abbotsford and Vancouver come to our volunteer events and support what we're doing here in Hope. So that's cool. They're learning to love this town, too. People from out Suckertown are getting really emotionally involved in this stuff, so it's cool. Next slide. Things that we're gonna do in 2015, as I mentioned, really promote the HBC trail now that it's completed. It's a finished product on the ground. We're gonna promote the heck out of it. Reprint the Trails of Hope brochure. We're gonna celebrate the KBR 100th. We're gonna have a bike ride on the Coca-Halle Summit. We're gonna have a special guided tour through the Athol tunnels led by one of the leading historians on the KBR, Joe Smuyn. We're gonna continue to help Advantage Hope. We're gonna be moving those interpretive signs over to the new station house and help with renovations at the station house. We're gonna help with the maintenance of the Hope Bike Park. And even after it transfers into ownership of the district, we want to continue to help the district to the degree you want our help. We want to come out there with volunteers and help you after the ice storms and the windstorms that are assured to come our way in the years ahead. Because there's a lot of pride in our community about that bike park. And we want to continue to help to, you know, provide insurance coverage for those volunteers and bring them to the park. And lastly, those expanded school programs, beavers, et cetera, insects, and those topics that we'll cover in our school programs. I think there's just one more slide and it's a thank you slide with a beautiful shot of Hope from the Hope Bookout Trail. Another trail that needs some maintenance after that windstorm in November. We're gonna be up there fixing up parts with it, I think, in the next couple months. Thanks for your time, you guys. I wouldn't go too, too long.
It was long, but good.
Good. Visually, right?
Long, but good.
Very good. Any troubling questions?
Oh, just went...
Just a comment. You really truly are an ambassador for Hope, like you and your team at Hope Mountain Center. I think it's fantastic and you should be really proud of what you do for our community. Because it's people like Hope Mountain Center that do go out and promote Hope at trade fairs on the ground. So I really do appreciate all your hard work, Kelly.
That Councilor Cropp and Councilor Erickson?
Yeah, and I thank you also from individual in the community as well as the council, Yeah, and I thank you also from individual in the community as well as the council because I see that you're also doing succession planning with the little ones and getting them involved and rightfully so because they're going to be the caretakers in the future. So I think that's an incredible opportunity for the future of Hope and I thank you for that. And also for your long-term vision of seeing and trying out all these new things to encourage people to enjoy the beauty of our community and also making aware of how to keep it safe at the same time. So I do appreciate that and please continue, it's exciting. I really enjoyed your presentation.
Great.
Thanks, guys, for your presentation. Just have one question. Is that huge trail, that's a big trail, is it any part of a mountain bike riding or none of it, is it all just hiking?
No, it's a good question. And it's, I mean, the core activities are definitely hiking and horseback riding. We wanted to honor the horseback tradition on the trail, basically a brigade trail. But the mountain bikers are expressing more and more interest in it. And the quick answer is there's definitely the first section, the western section from Pierce Creek up to Manson's Camp, the first six kilometers, it's basically a deactivated logging road. So it's very easy to have mountain bikes sharing it with hikers and horseback riders. There's good, safe sightlines and stuff, so absolutely they can ride that. And it's kind of a neat ride, you could ride your bike up, lock your bike up and then run up to Manson's Ridge, enjoy the view, run back down and ride out on the bike. So it's sort of a bike and hike, could be a really cool bike and hike day trip. But there's some hardcoreers who want to do it as a multi-day wilderness mountain biking ride. And my rationale is, you know, heck yeah, bring it on. For me, my worst nightmare would be not seeing the trail succeed. So I want to promote any non-motorized use of the trail as long as it doesn't create, you know, environmental impacts or conflicts with other use. At this point, if we get to a problem where there's so many people using the HBC that we just simply don't know what to do, that's a good crisis to have to deal with. I would rather precipitate that crisis and then deal with it than say, you know, no mountain biking on the trail. Because that's, mountain biking has a significant economic benefit to Hope. And I think if we can find opportunities to create more and more mountain biking experiences in our community outside of just the bike park alone, that's going to turn us into more of a destination for mountain bikes. And I think it's a cool sport, I love it. It's got people out huffing and huffing and enjoying the outdoors and they tend to move to communities that have those kind of amenities, so.
Thanks.
Mr. Pierce, you know, as mayor and as a person who has seen you do your thing for many years, I certainly am very appreciative of everything you do in that community. And a lot of our recent community successes are very much due to yourself. Roll up your sleeves and stay positive and make things happen. And I think you alluded to the activity at the bike park in your slideshow. And I know your group was key to making the bike park successful and will be key to making it successful in the future as well as we expand the park function.
Appreciate your support. It's nice to come back and report to you guys every year and get all that positive feedback from you, so I guess that's why I keep coming back. I want more. All right, thanks very much.
Thank you.
We have no staff reports, no committee reports. As I mentioned at the last council meeting, there's just a few things I would like to say. Sort of, I guess you could say tradition of sorts to every year for the mayor and council will look back on the previous year and then look forward to the next year. And I would like to take this opportunity to thank council for the hard work over 2015. It's our first year of a four-year term and I think it was a very productive one. What I've appreciated about this council is we have very diverse opinions that come to the table. Everyone is willing to state their opinion. I haven't sensed any fence sitting, which is good. And there's a lot of respect, which is nice. And I see council and staff as sort of an arranged marriage. We didn't really have say as to, in a platonic sort of way. It's, you can't really pick who you work with, but you have to work hard and do your best and bring out the best in those around you. And I think council and staff have done an admirable job in that regard. It was also kind of neat here for me because other than Mr. Gill, all new staff to me because I was six years out of the mayor's chair. So I guess other than Jazz and Mr. DeSorci, the rest of the senior staff were all new. And I've been very impressed with the work ethic and tenacity of senior staff. Also, we have some new people on board this year. Jazz is, of course, as everyone knows, has gone up the ladder a bit, so good to see him in Mr. Masumi's former position. Dale Cortez, who's unfortunately sick tonight, he wanted to be here, but he had the phone and sick today. On that, he brings a raft of experience to the table and I think our recent financial update indicates he knows his stuff. And of course, Ms. Dollman, recent as well, but working very hard for us, much appreciated. John and Donna, you do a great service to the community. Appreciate your follow-up and follow-through on all the issues that we bring to the table. I think it's also important that as we look back on 2015 that we recognize the community partners, you know, such as Mr. Pierce from the Hope Mountain Center, such as Advantage Hope Chamber, the countless community volunteer groups that make Hope a good place. And I'm tempted to go into individual groups, but there's literally a few dozen of them. And I think there's people that volunteer for Hope don't necessarily want a pat on the back there. Recognition is quite often just the progress that they see happen in the community. And I think this past year has been a very productive here that way. I know council, when we started off in 2015, I think we kind of set the tone as to how we are fiscally. We had some fairly exhaustive but productive budget discussions and we were able to keep the budget to a two percent increase, which I personally am very comfortable with. I think it's probably unrealistic to go for zero percent. The public has very clearly identified over the past couple of years that their threshold for tax increases is very low and people get cranky very quickly if the increases are beyond the two percent threshold. So we've, council's worked very hard with staff to make sure that that's what we stuck to. And hopefully in the future, we can do the same. As was referenced earlier, the bike park, I think that was a huge victory for the community. And that was much more than a council victory, that was a community cooperation victory. Staff worked very hard in making sure that all the processes were expedited with regards to development and the project coming together. We had local contractors volunteering time, doing things at cost, local volunteers, a lot of young people that hadn't previously volunteered roll up their sleeves and got going on it. So I thought that was quite nice. The Junction Project, I guess it's affectionately referred to, the tourist and museum center, I think that's going to be a huge feather in the cap of the community. You know, obviously a reasonably controversial project because of course everyone has a slightly different take on where it should go and how it should be done and who should be doing it. But of course, it's council's role to take a good, common sense, middle ground approach and make things happen. So I think we're going to have a very nice piece, a real nice center point that community wants finished. Looking forward to that. Infrastructure upgrades, I think it was clearly demonstrated to us just by looking at the infrastructure that we have and getting feedback from the public that a lot of our challenges in the future will be getting on top of maintaining roads in our communities, water systems, water systems, so on and so forth. Very expensive proposition and I know council took on a couple of large ones head-on, the Silver Hope Bridge being one of them. Not something that generally speaking is very flashy. Like a lot of folks, they, you know, after the bridge is open again, they drive on it like they did before. You know, there's, I think many folks, because they were not involved with the actual project, did not recognize how expensive the project was. But definitely a necessary one. So I think a lot of the projects that we have to take on over the next three years, our remaining three years, a lot of those projects will not necessarily be flashy, but be very necessary for the use and enjoyment of our community. The Ice Storm, that was kind of a noteworthy event, I thought, in 2015. We had the very best of the community come out to help. I know there were neighbors helping neighbors who didn't even know each other and it was an interesting way for people to get to know each other and unfortunately for people to get to know each other. But I know that everyone rallied around those that needed help and I know our staff worked very hard in making sure that people were best served. In 2015, we identified as well that in order to move forward, we have to have a very clear handle on our assets and know what we have, know the life cycle of the assets that we have, and then put together a plan as to how we can service it and replace it if necessary. Issues such as the seven-five-three waterworks system came up. That's certainly a topic that does not need an introduction for anyone. And I know that's something that council is committed to helping the seven-five-three waterworks users in 2016. But we have to do so in a very diligent financial way. We can't go into anything without knowing all the financial consequences. I know that from seeing council in action, I personally feel that council corporately with staff has been very business-friendly in looking at new ventures. And I'm hoping that that's a reputation that we will build on over the next three years because we are at the, I think a couple of council members rightfully pointed out, we're kind of at the cusp, we're kind of at the, I think that was, I think that was Councillor Dibolt that said that recently. We're sort of like the Quamish and Whistlers, the way they were years ago. So change will happen and it's important that we properly manage that change so that it's appropriate to new residents and also existing ones. Now, looking forward to 2016, I think it's going to be a very exciting year for us. Lots of projects on the go. I know that seeing the junction substantially completed will be huge. A less flashy initiative, which we have already identified as important, is the asset management program. And we have to be ready to access the federal government programs and provincial government programs as they come out. And the only way that we'll be able to leverage government funding is if we have a very accurate inventory of what we have. So this is once again, not something that everyone's all excited about, but it's certainly a necessary housekeeping item. And I think that's very important. Mr. Trudeau, when he came in, he said there's going to be a very ambitious investment in infrastructure. I'm hoping that is something, I'm hoping that is a promise that would be possible for him to keep. I'm hopeful it is. And if we can get infrastructure upgrades for, you know, twenty, twenty-five, $100, we have to be ready to go. As far as business promotion, I think we can be very innovative. We had a very interesting official community plan chat last week. I think everyone from council came through that thinking out of the box. Community has been involved in that process as well prior to us and we've had a lot of good ideas. I would like to work with council and staff to establish a reputation of really being innovative, like doing things that are not done in other communities. And when we take a look at things like the truck stop, for instance, obviously there's different ways to jumpstart the project. And the question about sewage disposal, you know, we have to look at all options. We obviously have to be very fiscally fair to existing taxpayers. But if we can do things that are innovative that get projects started sooner than later, I think that makes a lot of sense. And I know the community is hungry for new jobs. New jobs, of course, will take form of traditional land-based jobs, you know, bricks and mortar kind of jobs. Council has had some good discussions about the internet-based opportunities that we have now as a result of the TELUS fiber optic infrastructure that was invested. Fortunately, we did not pay nickel for that, which was kind of a nice bonus. TELUS invested millions and now we have internet accessibility, that's the envy of many communities around B.C. The OCP, of course, will have to implement that plan over our term. We have a neat opportunity with operations as well. It was a new, as a result of a very sad occurrence, of course, Mr. Ian Vaughan, our director of Public Works passed on unexpectedly. And that was definitely a very sad thing. But of course, we have to replace Mr. Vaughan, we have a new director coming in. And look forward to that being finalized and seeing what sort of innovative ideas come out of that direction. Was discussed this last year as well, a lot of folks have some really interesting questions. And some questions may not necessarily be suitable for the regular council meeting format. So what I would like to do, maybe starting in February, is have every two months have a forty-five-minute open house before council meeting. Council members that would like to be there can be there. Hopefully we'll have a minimum one senior staff person there to take notes on concerns from citizens. And then it's sort of, it'll be a respectful free-for-all as to questions you have. Does not have to, those questions will not have to be pertinent to the council meeting agenda. The council meetings, of course, as all of you know, there has to be some sense of respect and order and so on. So we have to keep a little bit of structure in there to keep it functioning well. Now, obviously, the respect category would be necessary at the little open house as well, but then any question is a fair question. And if we do not have answers at that little open house session, then we can find the answers and get back to the folks that asked the questions. Now, this, of course, does not preclude any member of the public asking council members or mayor or staff any time. But it's just an additional avenue to communicate with the community. Communication is obviously very important and the more we can dialogue with the community better. And certainly any innovative suggestions that anyone has pertaining to how we can better communicate with the public and get the word out and get feedback back is important. I know that social media, which was not even a mention ten years ago, is now sort of commonplace in everyone's computer life. So obviously, methods of communication have to be adjusted and that has to be respected. In 2016, I hope we take on a very ambitious infrastructure program, but of course, we do have now as of last year, I think we have a fairly good track record of the responsibility to keep taxes at an affordable level. And I think as long as we keep our budget deliberations very transparent and open to the public, I think we'll certainly minimize critical comments from the public because if they know that they've been included in all aspects of budget, the budget process, then I think we'll certainly have a lot smoother sail. And I think this last year was a good example of that. I think the comments from the public were very positive. A lot of people did pay attention to the budget and many of those are here today, many of those folks are here today. And so hopefully we'll even grow that for this year. And we are a small community and everyone expects their mayor and council to be accessible. We are that. And we certainly encourage feedback and innovative ideas because just because it hasn't been done before, doesn't mean it can't be done that way. So I think that's the mindset we all go into this with. So I certainly look forward to the next year and the next three years as mayor. To me, this is, we're living in a community, it's a resort you can still afford to live in. That's the way I see Hope in a community with a lot of potential. One of the things that I think I will continue to do and hold me accountable on this, and I think we'll have to hold each other accountable, is there are a small component of folks who have a negative predisposition. And I think we have to work very hard as community leaders to respectfully suggest that their high energy be directed in a positive way. And I know there's a lot of volunteer community groups that are looking for help. A lot of our volunteer community groups have people that are quite aged in them, they're looking for young and new talent. And I think one of our big challenges in the future will be to bring new talent to sort of a successorship planning scenario for other community groups in our town because we need young people volunteering more in this community if we want our groups to sustain themselves. So thank you to council, thank you to staff and the public. And that's as long-winded as I get because I'm losing my voice on that. And we do have opportunity here for council reports, so I think we'll start with Councillor Dibolt.
Just one meeting I attended with Councillor Erickson. The Fraser Health Recruitment Committee. So interesting meeting it was. They brought up recruitment from Suri and they have a pretty large marketing campaign to recruit professionals from Fraser Health and Medical Services to Hope, to not only just work in Hope, but to live in Hope. And they have partnered with Advantage Hope on some Instagram and some Facebook feeds. So an exciting opportunity for us to work with Fraser Health to recruit some professionals to our community. The Student Aid Program or the, what was that? What was that? We don't even have it.
Student Home Forgiveness, yeah.
Yes, so that is actually through the Ministry of the Student Aid Program. And they've been over budget since 2008, so they cut the District of Hope out of that process. And they actually worked a year in advance. So when we, I think when we went to UCM, had that discussion, they had already made the decision for 2016. So we're now working, Fraser Health is working with that program to look for 2017 for it to be implemented. So some challenges, they're looking at different ways of maybe a hundred percent forgiveness, but maybe twenty-five percent, thirty-three percent forgiven. And one of the criteria is, well, they don't have to live in the community in which they're working to get the student home forgiveness. So that's a bit of an issue I was thinking for recruitment. One thing that did come up and it was asked of the district, if we would look at a scholarship program, a bursary program, for someone in the, going into school to look at whether it's a care aid program, a residential support program, just so that it can help people be employed in Hope. They can't keep care aides in Hope, they can't recruit them to Hope. So they have a little challenge. So that was a question that was posed, if we wanted to look at a bursary or scholarship program. So I will... So I will leave that for thoughts around discussion and deliberations. But yeah. So anyways, we're looking at a more localized process around when a doctor, for instance, comes to Hope. How can we wrap services around the family? So getting the school district involved, doing a bit of a mini tour of the community, Hope Mountain Center, the rec center, school district. Just what are those opportunities for families? Because they do know that if a professional is recruited here, if the spouse isn't happy, that person is not staying. So happy life, happy life. So we want to make sure that spouses are happy. So a localized committee is going to be brought together to work on a plan. And I am sure Council Erickson has more to add to the meeting. So that was, that's all I've done.
Sounds good. That was a good bunch.
That's exciting. Mine's not quite as exciting, but still exciting for me. I attended the Ideas Jam and came out of there feeling just really pumped about Hope. It really put the hope back in hope for me. So that was great, well organized and very enjoyable. Also, I attended, just as an observer, to the Crystal River Park Association meeting. They're forming an association to try and help with their area to make it a little more pleasant. And it was a wild run meeting.
Yeah, it was good.
And people were very friendly and looking forward to the future. So that was great. Also attended my first Gold Natures meeting of the year and usual. What's that?
Is that old?
Yes.
Well preserved.
They stick out in that room. I walk in and it's like, whoop. And they are just such a fun, fun bunch. And they made thirty-six cents for interest in November and lost six cents in December, but they celebrated the thirty cents. It was wonderful. So, but they did have a concern. And they're very, they were concerned about the snow removal process on the sidewalks. By the time they saw me after the snowfall, they had worked up to a really passionate deliverance of their request. And so their concern came from some of the senior citizens were falling on the snow on the sidewalks. And it wasn't so much a dig at the District of Hope. It's they would get a good momentum going and then they would hit a part of the sidewalk that wasn't attended to by either, you know, a homeowner or a business. And then that's where the trips and fall would occur. So they've asked me to share with you that if at all possible, review the snow removal policy and to pay special attention to Fourth Avenue, Fifth Avenue and Sixth Avenue, just for safe walking after a snowfall due to mobility issues. So I pass that on with respect from the men and from myself for cleaning up after a snowfall. And that is everything.
Thank you, Councilor.
Appreciate it.
Councilor Millar.
Thank you. I guess it was two weekends ago. I went to a Community Futures Strategic Planning Session. We do it every year, but more involved every couple of years. I think I've mentioned before that the board is sort of changing out of, we've been told to change every nine years. You have to step down for a year. So there's a lot of new members that are on the board, which serves our community. But it was a good planning session. And we're still on the same page as we have been in previous years. So that was a really good two-D session. And other than that, I have an Advantage Hope meeting we'll be going to tomorrow, Council Dibl and myself. And that's all I have for the board.
Thank you for your answer. Council Erickson.
Okay, so I did a Chamber of Commerce meeting. And I think most of you know that the Chamber of Commerce is having a series of three meetings, one per month, one month in January, February and March. And the meetings are what Hope was, what Hope is, and is there a future for Hope? So January, February, March. And this meeting on this coming Wednesday, it's just, you know, it's all sold out, except I have five tickets left. And it's a hundred and ten or a hundred and twenty, if I remember.
Hoarding.
Pardon me?
You're hoarding.
Well, I thought I'd keep them for here in case somebody here didn't have them. So the meeting this week will be, Bud Gardner's going to speak. He's the mayor, an older mayor. And Ray Zerbini is going to speak. And Chuck Strahl is going to speak on what Hope was like. Do you remember Hope had a lot of logging and a lot of industry? Now, we don't have much of that anymore, presumably. So anyway, I think it's going to be a very successful, ten dollars per person. So if you don't have a ticket, I think you've got a couple left.
I've got two, yeah.
Two left. I got, I think, three or four. So we have a few left. I purposely kept mine so that I can make the announcement in case some of you didn't have one. Anyway, in the February meeting, we've already got scheduled, the February meeting is going to be the B.C. Economic Development person speaking there. And it's supposed to be a very successful speaker. So, and then we have two other speakers planned, not confirmed yet, but pretty high-profile speakers. And then the March one, again, we have two candidate speakers for that. When I say we, I'm on the board, so I've been kind of helping out with it. So that's one thing. Now, do you see the Hope Repairers are videoing this meeting? Do you have any idea how many people looked at it since last, our last meeting? How many hits on YouTube? Hundred and forty-plus. I've got several phone calls over it that they said, I saw you on YouTube and that's what was going on.
You're a rock star.
I thought, you know, it's a hundred and forty people that aren't here, that are actually seeing what's actually happening. And I think it's really great that people are actually getting involved with what's going on at Hope. I just wanted to bring that. And again, I was with Council Dibl at the Fraser Canyon Hospital Recruitment and Intention. That was a very successful meeting, Jerry, I thought. But I think one thing that I would really like strongly that the council would look at would be a bursary or a grant somehow. If we could get two or three high school students or, not even high school, maybe mothers or somebody who's unemployed that were really interested, that would come back and work and put in several years, that we would give a certain amount of a grant. And then if we'd be amortized over two or three or four years, if it was possible, maybe one or two students. And they'd have to stay and work here at Tabitha and Tid. I think it would be a very good initiative. It could be, we could do as a trial. And I wouldn't mind helping out, working through the details. That's why I think I would like to see council, personally, I'd like to see council have another meeting like we had last Monday, just a gap session, so we could talk about these issues, how we could work through, if it would be a benefit to the community. I think we need to have more discussion of council over these issues. And then we're more prepared to come to, whenever a council meeting, and say, this is what we'd have to go. And Mr. Porloski, I want to thank you so much for getting Dale to give us the great financial statements. This is the best since I've been here in a year. This is readable, understandable and very, very good. So I want to thank you for it. I'd like to see this like on a quarterly basis or on a monthly basis to see how we're at. And if you look at the numbers, I know it's tentative, I know it's not final, but I think we're in very good standing in very good last year. So I really want to thank you for that. I'm glad I brought it up and pushed you. Because I would want us to see this for a long time. And I'd like to see Dale come and thank him too. Because he's a very, I think it's very readable, very legible. Anybody can read this and see where we're at.
He will be at the next meeting. Unfortunately, again, he was ill today.
I have a few questions on things that I don't understand, you know, why this was going here and that. But that's nothing, it's just something that can, so thank you. Sorry, I wanted to.
Yeah, you exceeded your five minutes.
I know.
Sorry, thank you. So that was great. Unfortunately, I was ill last week and I'm kind of disappointed. But I can see the outcome of some of the work that happened on Monday. So thank you for sitting in my stead for everyone. Thank you. I was very ill and I just really appreciated all the prayers that went out for me. I sure needed them. But anyhow, with that being said, a couple of comments. I didn't really do a whole lot last week at all. But anyhow, thank you to the mayor for the review of the year and of where we're putting it into perspective of where we're kind of going for the future. I appreciated those comments. Nice to see that council is becoming a little more cohesive. And with the newbies on board, you know, you're doing very well. And seeing a lot of growth there in people, it's kind of nice. I'm sure it's pretty overwhelming sometimes. The budget, yes, the budget was a welcome review. Some of us have been asking for a while for a little more frequent updates. And so that is nice to see. I do appreciate it. Again, thank you to Dale. I commented about the bursary from Council Dibl and Council Erickson. I know that there's a lot of programs out there, the Lance Club and the Rotary Club and the Eagles and the, even though the foresters are disbanded, they still do have monies that they give out from time to time. And I know that the kids really do benefit in the high school for that. But I would love to see even ten percent go towards something like this as well in conjunction to make it a little more enticing pot and to kind of include the community as far as making everyone aware that we will have these newcomers and there will be the whole family dynamics that we have to think about as a community to encourage people to stay. So once you get everybody involved, it's a little bit easier to buy in. And it's also encouraging for council to work together with everyone. So I'd love to also sit in on, you know, if we had a work committee for that, I would certainly be on board for that. So those are my comments. Thank you for that. That's it.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate your report. Now, moving on to permits and bylaws, item eight, item eight A, zoning amendment bylaw number thirteen sixty-seven, twenty fifteen. Previously discussed, the nineteen seven hundred Claussen Road, key value holdings. Recommendation for council discussion is that, the District of Hope zoning amendment bylaw number thirteen sixty-seven, twenty fifteen, we read a third time this twenty-fifth day of January, twenty sixteen, an orgery zone, the property legal use fragment, nineteen seven hundred Claussen Road from rural to light service industrial I two. Do we have a motion, we were in second here to open discussion.
Some of it.
Okay. Council Erickson, Council Dibl. Okay, we have a motion on the table, discussion, I assume? All questions were answered at the, over here?
Thank you. Sorry, thank you. Through you. So my question is really through you to just, so when this property is kind of in the development stage, is there an opportunity to have kind of an update on that and see where we're going? I'm just a little bit concerned about maybe the buffer zoning factor. Is there something going to be included in that? Is it, because it's not really in the OCP, so I was just wondering a little bit.
Your worship through you. Councilor, that's a great answer or a question. The answer to that would be basically, there is a development process that this would have to occur. And so if there is a concern with buffering and all that, yes, it could be taken care of. That's part of landscaping aspect of this development.
Okay. Doing, because there's residential and a fairly close proximity, I'm thinking the noise factor, the dust and the traffic. I would be interested in seeing something come forward.
Those could be all items taken into consideration for the development, right?
Thank you.
Your worship through you. One thing I'm concerned about is the sewer. Do we get involved with that prior to the development permit or during the development's permit? If it's our responsibility, we're going to pay for it, they're going to pay for it, it could be a cost sharing of the costs or how does that?
Your worship through you. It all depends on the initiative. Is it something that we're trying to do or is it what the developer's trying to do? Usually, we have the developer put it at their cost. Quite frankly, it's going to benefit them.
But then I heard someone say that the other people could hook into it, so that wouldn't be fair to the developer?
Your worship. Well, there's a provision for latecomer fees, correct?
That is correct. There's a latecomer's provision if the developer decides to recoup or absorb some of the cost by doing that latecomer's agreement. Latecomer's agreement only lasts for ten years?
Obviously.
But I know you're a think-out-of-the-box kind of person, Mr. Gill. So if you can, you know, get a little menu of options that are available to council to, you know, help out with this project, it'd be more than keen. Okay. Motion's on the table, it's been discussed. All those in favor, contrary, motion carries, thank you. Item eight B, zoning amendment bylaw thirteen sixty-eight, twenty sixteen, institutional P two to light industrial I two at five-five-five Rab Street. And issuance of a Princeton Way development permit. I'll read out the suggested motion and we can throw it on the table as council's desire. We'll go from there. Recommended motion is that District of Hope zoning amendment bylaw thirteen sixty-eight, twenty sixteen be given, excuse me, first and second readings in order to, in order to rezone the property legal described at five-five-five Rab Street from institutional P two to light service industrial I two. And further that, the public be notified in accordance with the District of Hope application procedures and public hearing information meeting procedural bylaw number thirteen ninety-three, the local government act and the community charter. And further that, the Director of Community Development be authorized to endorse the necessary Old Hope Princeton Way development permit should five-five-five Rab Street be successful to be rezoned to light service industrial. And further that, the Director of Community Development be authorized to approve minor changes to the development permit. And do we have a motion that effect? Okay, Councilor Crowe, moving.
Second.
Okay. Councilor Millar, moving in second here. Now, Mr. Gill, would you like to speak to this?
Most certainly. Your worship through you. B.C. Hydro is in the midst of facility improvements and yard upgrades at their Hope District Office and storage yard located at five-five-five Rab Street. The improvements and upgrades include male and overlay distant asphalt pavement as included in the design, which is attached to the report. Paint asphalt over gravel areas, install localized walk pits and drainage channel to drain stormwater. And they would like to erect a, called an L shed, where they can store materials. It's basically a structure. And remove existing pole bunks and replace to B.C. hydro standards at existing locations. Their current zoning P two does not allow for outdoor storage. They were asked in a previous, I guess it was a subdivision rezoning application in two thousand and five as to if they would like to rezon. And the response we got from B.C. Hydro was that they weren't interested. And they weren't too sure about their Hope activities. Now, they've sort of wanted to expand and therefore, we're going through this rezoning process. They want to get this done and completed soon enough for their, for their physical year. It's basically March thirty-first for this project. Councils should note that we are going with the development permit approval based on, let's say, a successful rezoning. The reason why staff is approaching this matter is we're comfortable with what the project is. It's existing. It's not really changing overall.
Okay. Vale. Motion's on the table. Any further comments? All those in favor? Contrary, motion carries, thank you. Correspondents, item nine eight, only one little item here from Mayor Darren Mosaki. Motion received, please.
It's a hit.
Thank you. Councilor Crowe, second here.
Second.
Thank you, Councilor Millar. All those in favor? Motion carries, thank you. Item nine B, from the Cascade Lower Canyon Community Forest Board of Directors, recommendation that John Mason be appointed as Director to the Cascade Lower Canyon Community Forest Board of Directors as a District of Hope representative. And Mr. Porloski, would you like to speak to that?
Yes, your worship, Councilors. As you're aware, a board has been established for the operation and running of the community forest. There has been a change to the bylaws in that we now have two representatives per shareholder, that being Yale First Nation, the FDRian Hope, as well as one alternate board director to ease the burden on the board directors and ensure best continuity and integrity of the process. I have here, present to you, Mr. John Mason, who has applied. John, would you stand up? Thank you very much, Mr. Mason. And in fact, I'm sure he'll entertain questions from yourself. The application that he presented to the board is attached to your package. And the board has vetted the application and ultimately forwards it to you for your endorsement approval. We feel Mr. Mason would be a very positive addition to the board. We feel Mr. Mason would be a very positive addition to the board from the public on the board. So it is for your approval, obviously.
Mr. Mason, would you like to say anything?
Oh, I have whatever you want to ask me. I don't know too much about the community forest yet. I haven't attended any meetings. All I knew was, I was entertained, it's what I've read. But I've had a lot of community activity over my lifetime, so I think it will be a benefit to the community.
Well, a fresh perspective and a friendly face is probably what the board needs, so. We have a motion to ratify that suggestion. That's second. Thank you. Counselor Erickson, Counselor Millar, moving in second here. All those in favor? Thank you very much. Congratulations, Mr. Mason.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, congratulations and thank you. I think you'll find it quite interesting, because that community forest has some, has some huge potential to really grow in the future and really be an asset in our community.
Thanks.
Yeah, so glad to have you on board, appreciate it. Okay, no other pertinent business. Question period, calls for questions from the public, relevant to agenda. Okay, the next regular meeting will be February 9th at 7:00 p.m. Motion to adjourn, please, and one hit to the agenda. Okay, thank you.
May I propose a five-minute break?
I will need a five-minute break, I have a drink.